Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I'd like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting of April 26, 2023. The city council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Public Meetings Act. Community members are welcome to join either in person, remote via Zoom, or by calling in. For those who wish to participate in the future via Zoom, you'll find instructions to register for public comment on the City of Everett website under the City Council Department. Please note, we do not allow comments on any kind of campaigning, whether for or against ballot measures or candidates running for office. We also do not accept comments focused on personal matters that are unrelated to city business. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Franklin?
Here.
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Tuohy?
Here.
Councilmember Fossey?
Excused.
Councilmember Schwab?
Here.
Councilmember Vogel?
Here.
President Stonecifer?
Here. Vice President Tuohy, would you please lead us in the flag salute? Yes, please rise.
(Inaudible) United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, boy. Let's see. Do you have the land acknowledgement handy?
Mary was supposed to do it.
Councilmember Vogel, would you please lead the land acknowledgement this evening?
Yes, thank you. The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shohok people, and their successors, the Tleilul' tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you, and we will take up the matter of our minutes for the April 19, 2023 meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Councilmember Ryan moves approval of the April 19, 2023 minutes.
Seconded.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Tuohy?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes, and good evening, Mayor Franklin.
Good evening, President Stonecifer and council. I apologize in advance, I have a little lengthy comments this evening. I'll try to be speedy. First today, along with Councilmember Schwab, I was honored to participate in the Labor Council's Workers Memorial Service, and so on behalf of City of Everett, I would like to ask all Everett residents to observe and honor the workers killed, injured, and disabled on the job and service to their communities, and obviously, this is near and dear to us because we lost one of our own last year. And with that, I would like to invite Deputy Chief Jared Irving forward to swear in our newest officer.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Jared Irving with the Police Department. It's my pleasure to be able to bring forward Student Officer Jenny Fuentes. Jenny was born in Texas but was raised in Montrose, Colorado. She lived in Greece for a few years before returning to Montrose, where she graduated from high school. Jenny went on to receive her bachelor's degree in Health and Administration from the University of Utah in 2016. Prior to joining the Everett Police Department, Jenny served for five years as an operational specialist and rescue swimmer for the United States Navy. I've already been kind of putting a plug in for the dive team, so she will try out for the Everett Police Department dive team. She lived in Japan for the majority of that time, then transferred to Everett in 2021. Jenny decided to remain a Navy reservist but pursued a career in law enforcement so she could be more involved in her local community and see the positive impacts of her efforts. Jenny knew EPD was the place for her from the very beginning when she got the call from her background investigator, Officer Kravchin. She immediately felt cared for, supported, and valued. She's excited to work with people who inspire her and she respects. Jenny graduated from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy on Monday, and I would also like to mention that due to her leadership, her compassion, and champagne personality, she was selected as a vice president for her class. She looks forward to her future here at EPD, where she knows she will be challenged and there will be opportunities to learn and grow both personally and professionally. Jenny joins the Everett Police Department family with her husband, Chris, who is still active-duty Navy. They share the love for the outdoors, jiu-jitsu, CrossFit, and traveling. The other thing that I'd like to mention is she has a nice contingent of her family, which is so important for the success for the next 20 to 25 years in law enforcement. So with that, I present to you Officer Jenny Fuentes for swearing in.
Thank you. Clerk, we...
You know, we need a motion.
Oh, yes, we have to take the motion first. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move that Jenny Fuentes become a new Everett Police Department officer.
Thank you.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Tuohy?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes, and now we will administer the oath.
All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Jenny Fuentes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am either a citizen of the United States.
That either I am a citizen of the United States.
Or a lawful permanent resident.
Or a lawful permanent resident.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Everett.
And the charters and ordinances of the State of Washington.
Of the City of Everett.
The City of Everett, sorry.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer of the City of Everett.
(Inaudible).
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Of the City of Everett.
Of the City of Everett.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So, welcome, Officer Fuentes, and thank you to the family here for being here to support our newest officer. Further updates I have is this week, or last week, together with Sound Transit and Councilmembers Zarlingo, we got to host a Sound Transit Link Extension corridor tour of the Everett Link Extension and the part of the system that is in our community and in Linwood and south, unincorporated. We visited possible station locations and then had our final elected leadership group meeting, where we made recommendations on the preferred sites and eliminated others. And I know a few of you council members and many in our community expressed interest in receiving updates on option A in the Casino Road Evergreen area. And although it is not the preferred option at this time, based on staff's technical evaluation, due to the strong community support, we recommended the site move forward and be studied as well. Next update I have is on the Hope Church, and I believe we have some members in the audience very interested in that topic. As council saw in a memo that was shared from Snohomish County late yesterday, I sent out today to the council regarding Hope Church. It appears the county is pulling away from the Hope Church property purchase and will not be locating the UCC shelter there. They are working to extend the lease of the current UCC site that's in downtown for six months and have offered $4 million in one-time county funds that we, as a city, may be able to use following a process to relocate those individuals currently at UCC to another more suitable site in Everett. We will work to update all neighborhoods who have reached out to us on this, and although this may feel like a win for the neighborhood, which we totally understand, we do still have many individuals who are living unsheltered in our community that we must serve. And then another update, obviously, we had a busy weekend. Session ended, and now that session has come to a close, we're expecting our lobbyist, Trevor, to come to the council on May 24 to provide a full after-action report to council. And then, related to that, I wanted to share that many elected leaders across our state were very busy with work this weekend related to the Blake decision, and I wanted to give a little feedback on how mayors across the state weighed in on this important issue. We were very much in support of the Senate version that reached an equal bipartisan support and want to really thank Senator, our Senator, June Robinson for her leadership on that. Unfortunately, the other versions had challenges that mayors, police chiefs, sheriffs, and prosecutors across the state and across political spectrums didn't support. We definitely continue to advocate for a statewide solution, and we're still hopeful that a special session may produce one of those that cities can successfully implement. So, it failed, and so that makes this current ordinance that we're looking at later today probably all the more important because if there's not a special session, we do not have a fix come July 1st. So with that, I have no further comments this evening. Oh, wait, no, I lied, I'm so sorry. I do have further comments. Finally, I'm asking for council's concurrence on the ESDA rate pair board appointments, and I have a long list of names to read, and then I'll ask for a motion to move them to this board. First, Danielle Kovoto, Pine Street Hospitality; Andrea Contente, Snow Isle Process Solutions; Rachel Downs, Housing Hope and Hope Works Social Enterprises; Joey Farick, 3102 Smith Project; Neil Maddie, MJM Partners; Lance Miller, Brook Trout Properties; Nicole Pettigrew, Kaiser Permanente; Joe Severs, HO Seifert Company; Craig Scottdahl, Scottdahl Real Estate; Jim Stephenson, Glacier Properties; Chuck Watts, Watts Investment; Sean Bridge, City of Everett; and Jamie Lee Graves, City of Everett. Thank you. So I need a motion for those.
I'll move for approval of the mayor's recommendations for the Economic Improvement District. Thank you.
Councilmember Schwab, second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Any questions or comments before we take the roll? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Tuohy?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes, and that's it. Thank you, Mayor. We will now move to public comment, and welcome Deb Williams back tonight with us this evening. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Good evening, President Stonecifer. We actually have several people both signed up to speak and also have provided written comment. So before I call on the individual that's online, I want to read all the names of the individuals who have provided written comment. All these comments have been provided to all of council and to administration and city clerk to make part of the permanent record. Patricia Escolara, Shell Cruz, Judy Rodriguez, Holly Burkett-Poland, Maxwell Mooney, Jennifer Cross, owner of The Dog Spot, Liz Stinning provided a letter that came from Michelle Dicinger Viking Construction, Amy and Carl Murray, Andrew M. Hall with Botesh Nash &amp; Hall, Jared and Sydney Sisco, flooring by Sisco, Brett Alexander, Gerald Nguyen. All of those individuals sent comments, written comment, in support of items 14 and 15. Paula Townsend and her husband Christopher Glanz provided some questions for research to be looked at, and, sorry about this. And then we have, before we go to the people in the audience, we have Lindsay Arrington. Lindsay, if I could have you, please turn on your camera, please unmute yourself, and please give yourself three minutes, and start by giving your name and your city of residence, please. Thank you.
Hi, my pleasure. Good evening, Mayor Franklin and members of the council. My name is Lindsay Arrington. I'm a resident of Everett, Washington. I also run a local nonprofit where we help people who are struggling with addiction and mental health disorders. I wanted to give you my comments on EMC 10.35.120 and EMC 9.54.020A. I'm in full support of this. I have seen both sides of addiction. I have lived experience in addiction, and as a person that's on the front lines of this pandemic, you know, I'm seeing a greater need for accountability for those who are struggling. We cannot have compassion without offering solutions, and if solutions are rejected, it cannot continue to negatively impact the safety of our community. I'm fully supportive of these codes and these changes, and I believe that raising the bar for individuals using drugs may provide more opportunities of connecting them with services and renew a sense of security for Everett residents, employees, and visitors. It is a disservice to individuals with substance use issues to be given free rein to destroy themselves in public and private property. This is not compassion, and we must do better for them and the community. The judicial system and incarceration have been effective tools towards guiding people onto a path of recovery. It's not the answer, but it's an answer, and we need as many options as possible to mitigate this crisis. Thank you for your time. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And then I'm going to move to the individuals in the audience. The only one I'm not sure about is Penelope. You have not said whether or not you want to speak under public comment or if you want to wait till items 14 and 15?
I'm...
You'd like to wait?
Yes.
Okay. I'm hoping that's what she said. Liz Stinning?
(Inaudible) wait a second now. Hi, Liz Stinning, Lake Forest Park, Washington. Thank you, city council, for your work and your service here tonight. The Downtown Everett Association is here in support of city ordinances 2304, 29, and 30. So we hear from businesses daily who are witnessing a dramatic increase in public drug consumption. Business owners handle biohazards themselves and drug paraphernalia on a daily basis as they try to keep their shops and businesses open and welcoming for customers. Some, we hear, are locking their doors and operating by appointment only. Our downtown cleaning team, which are our employees, are tasked with a massive effort to clean the whole downtown, and they've adapted to the increased risks to their own personal safety. But every day, it takes a toll on their own mental health, and at times, they feel like their jobs are hopeless. The rise in fentanyl, heroin, and meth has created significant public safety challenges. It's unsafe for everyone, employees, business owners, visitors, service providers, and people using drugs. Like many towns and cities we're seeing across the state and the country, we're also seeing an increase in shoplifting, theft, broken windows, vandalism, and assaults. And we do hear compassion from business owners and property owners and residents. Many of those suffering from addiction are in unsheltered hazardous conditions on our streets, and this is not healthy for their safety or recovery. So it's crucial that they receive more access to services and treatments like you support. At the same time, we also need to support the entire community. Establishing zones around services that have become a magnet for negative activity supports the people living around those services as well as a safe environment for those getting treatment and assistance. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Paula Townsend, Everett resident, District 3. I'm here tonight to thank the council and the mayor for the ongoing work on climate change and to share how your actions ripple to positively impact the nation. The backstory that you may not be aware of is regarding the exciting award that was received last week by Everett Transit. Released just prior to Earth Day in the other Washington, the Federal Transit Administration recognizes Everett Transit for reducing its environmental footprint tackling climate change. The U.S. Department of Transportation's Federal Transit Administration, the FTA, today recognized the exemplary efforts of Everett Transit for its plans for electrifying its bus fleet within five years to combat climate change. Everett Transit's work, part of the FTA's Sustainable Transit for a Healthy Planet initiative, garnered the Washington Transit Agency an award during the FTA's Second Annual Earth Day event. Everett Transit received a Champion of the Challenge Award for its ambitious and comprehensive zero-emission fleet transition plan. The plan sets a roadmap to transition its entire bus fleet by 2028, including worker training. The agency's electrification efforts thus far, deploying 10 buses, have enabled Everett Transit to reduce approximately 2.2 million pounds of carbon dioxide emissions. The quote is, "Transit agencies across the country are greening their fleets, hardening critical infrastructure, and transitioning their workforces to reduce the disproportionate impacts of a warming climate on their communities." The FTA administrator stated, "I congratulate and thank Everett Transit for its ambitious electrification plan and their work to decrease carbon emissions in Washington." Created in June of 2021 to help advance President Biden's ambitious greenhouse gas, the GHG, reduction goals, FTA's Climate Challenge calls on transit agencies to develop strategies to reduce emissions such as converting fleets to electric buses, making facilities more efficient, and generating power through renewable energy sources. A total of 222 transit agencies from Maine to Hawaii participated in the FTA Climate Challenge. I applaud the council and the mayor for supporting the visionary work of Everett Transit to be a nationally recognized leader for a healthy planet. I appreciate all the dedicated staff who made our city outstanding and continues to make it outstanding, so congratulations to Everett Transit, and thank you for improving our local air quality. Good night.
Hi, Mayor, council. Mary Rollins, City of Everett, District 2. I was sad to hear that that Hope Church was pulled off the docket. That's my neighborhood. I pay taxes. I'm a homeowner, and I'm only a homeowner because for several years, I struggled with a child with disabilities and another son and being homeless. I spoke at one of the neighborhood meetings, and as I gave my story, I was yelled at as I walked out of the room. Are you even a homeowner? Do you even live here? Do you even pay taxes? As if somebody that lived in that neighborhood couldn't see what a wonderful thing this was being offered by the Snohomish County and in conjunction with the City of Everett. We cannot turn our eyes away from the folks that are trying to survive, living in doorways. We need to open our hearts, open our minds, get out of this kind of NIMBY attitude, you know, I don't want them in my neighborhood. Well, whose neighborhood are they going to be in? Right now, they're all over the city, most of them hiding like I used to when I was homeless. I hope we can find a reasonable place within the city with reasonable neighbors who will find compassion in their hearts and see that maybe we can be part of the solution and not part of the ongoing problem treating each other as the other and not thinking maybe that would be me. Maybe I could lose everything because of a bad health bill or a bankruptcy, or my car broke down and I don't have the money to fix it. Whatever it is, until you walk in somebody's shoes who's been homeless three times, in my case, and know that there's hope on the other end, you're not going to be able to change somebody's mind because they've got theirs, and why should I help somebody else get theirs? That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Jim Langus, and President Stonecifer, he was granted additional time.
Thank you. He got his time. We never say no.
We all have compassion for the very vulnerable homeless. You know, the city is facing a lot of headwinds. I mentioned before that I believe we're facing a perfect storm, and I provided my rationale. And unfortunately, crime is going to increase, and the Police Department is shorthanded today in staffing many of its operations and units. And it isn't because the department hasn't been trying to hire police officers, because Chief Templeman has been doing everything possible to hire. The Fire Department's Emergency Medical and Response Units are also running engines and medic transports day and night. You may recall that I had referenced with 215 police officers budgeted today, and with the matrix report addition of their five more sworn officers, this would increase the budget staffing to 220 police officers. Recently, the department had 20 to 25 vacancies. I'm asking again that you develop a public safety hiring plan and a hiring plan that you can visit periodically or on an annual basis to discuss existing circumstances and demands. Whether it's a five, seven, or 10-year plan, that is your decision, and the police chief and his command staff and the captains can provide their needs and rationale. If the plan is 220, I want to emphasize a point of view that if 220 is their number, that the department should have 220 officers hired and available to serve every day. And because there will always be vacancies, the department should plan ahead with the safety net of an additional 20 police officers for a total of 240-plus positions, with the purpose of having the department staffed at 220 officers available to serve on any given day. And I understand there will be fluctuations in headcount. I want to be clear that Chief Templeman has never asked me to advocate for more police officers. I trust his judgment, and he's been busy fighting the battle on hiring every day. I'm a private citizen who cares enough to ask you to consider solutions. When I met with Mayor Franklin and Chief Templeman, who I respect, I shared considerable information. I also met with the chief, and he was very open and helpful and clarified certain points, and I appreciate what he said, and that he took time to understand my private citizen's perspective. It's been a few years since directly engaged with the city and the Police Department, but I'm very comfortable with my perspective, and I trust my judgment. And this is how I feel. The police place themselves and their lives at risk every day. Most individuals couldn't meet the standards to become an Everett police officer. Few could meet the demands and the pressures. We need to have more resources because crime is going to increase. I know we can't have a police officer on every block, but we can have a larger presence available to the public and to let those know on the streets and in the alleys committing crimes that you, the city's elected officials, are serious about thwarting their behavior. And the judicial system and prosecutors then need to do their part with appropriate consequences. I want to commend Mayor Franklin and Chief Templeman and Public Safety Committee members Schwab and Tuohy and the entire city council for your planning and looking ahead as a result of the inaction by the legislature. And thanks to President Stonecifer for her ongoing and effective leadership as council president. You know, these ordinances before the council for third reading next week demonstrate a proactive approach from the city's elected officials, and as an Everett citizen, I will continue to speak favorably in support of both. Let's never become ambivalent or complacent. Let's never become ambivalent or complacent. Our wonderful city and its citizens and our youth are important to all of us. Thank you, President Stonecifer. I appreciate your courtesy and allotment of time this evening. Thank you very much.
President Stonecifer, I do have several more people signed up to speak, but they wish to wait until items 14 and 15 are called. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. We'll move on to our council comments and liaison reports, and we'll start with Council Member Zarlingo.
Thank you, President.
Thank you, President Stonecifer. Well, first, a quick note. I was delighted to learn that new officer Jenny Fuentes grew up in western Colorado, as did I. And it sounds to me like she's had the same reaction to being here in Everett, that this is the place she wants to continue to be. So that is great to hear. And congratulations to Officer Abalos, Officer Templeman, and the whole team for the recruiting that they're doing. Last night, a quick note about my visit to the Pinehurst Beverly Park neighborhood meeting. Big thanks to the people who keep those meetings going, keep involved in their neighborhoods, organize the meetings, get speakers, organize cleanup crews, and advocate for their own interests there. They had a briefing last night from Public Works for the reservoir three replacement project that's coming up. This is another example of the kinds of things that I think the administration and staff do well, the kinds of things that we all sort of rely on. In this case, it's our water supply. And Everett, because of the foresight of people most of a century ago, built a really expansive system and it serves now something like three quarters of the county with water, which helps defray some of our expenses, these utility fees. That's what pays for the utility expansion. So this 20 million gallon reservoir that's a century or so old and, to put it kindly, has reached the end of its useful life and no longer meets the seismic standards, is going to be replaced with actually a series of three reservoirs. And they're going to be able to do this while maintaining adequate capacity and serving all of us continuously through this. So thanks and congratulations to that team that do those things that are so critical to us day to day. As Mayor Franklin mentioned also, we had the second of our tours of elected leaders and other staff for the Sound Transit. And this is the effort to choose or to reduce the possible number of alignments and possible station locations and the operations and maintenance facility for the Sound Transit Light Rail System that's coming. Currently, Sound Transit serves us with buses and even though the trains are some years away, actually late next year, they'll arrive in South Alderwood. That'll be where it enters Snohomish County. But the Everett Link Extension is 16 and something miles, the biggest expansion of the system. And so the work that's going on, especially with the Sound Transit Board and elected leaders, is designed to make that all work as, make the best choices we can to advise, in our case, the full Sound Transit Board and to make a lot of decisions that will be affecting development, transit, and denser housing that are coming in the much nearer term. And I guess I will say with respect to the tension on what's called Site A, it's the transit locations, the potential station locations at the east end or at the intersection of Casino Road and Evergreen Way. It's a particularly difficult spot, five possible locations. Two of them have been recommended to be dropped from here on, leaving three others, and one of those is indeed the site favored by the group that's organized around Casino Road. And I will say that our elected leadership group went there, got out, walked around, walked Casino Square, walked over the pedestrian bridge, and examined all that in detail. So I want to reassure people that this is being considered as thoroughly and as comprehensively as we possibly can. And so those things will all be advanced. They'll be voted on by the Sound Transit Full Board, I think in June or so. But that's part of a further reduction. Then there'll be environmental impact statements and then some decisions after that that are probably a couple of years away. So thanks to those teams organizing that and for the elected leaders that took the time to come here and actually see these things firsthand. And also, I guess I want to generally thank all the people who have written in, who have testified, and probably some who will also next week with respect to the main two ordinances before us. We really appreciate that. You know, a crowd like this coming to listen and talk is how we most effectively do our jobs and make the best decisions we can. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I wanted to first start with a thank you to everybody that's written in over the last week and also here tonight for comments on all different types of topics. And we hear and read all of your emails and really appreciate your engagement and your input and your perspective from across the city. So thank you, everybody, for your time and thoughtfulness on that. I want to send, also share a thank you to our Everett Leadership Group. I appreciate the comments tonight and for hearing the community's concerns in the Casino Row area and keeping Option A on the table for further study. I know it means a lot to the community, so I'm grateful for that. Thank you so much. And I have an apology that I forgot in last week's comments to share, that we had our inaugural Parks and Quality of Life Committee meeting before last week's council meeting. So we had a great discussion regarding the parks, the stadium project and update with that, the downtown restroom project, the hydroplan races, which we voted on last week, and coming up with some other goals and discussion topics for our committee for the rest of the year. So if folks are interested in any of those topics, I would encourage them to take a look at the committee meeting from last Wednesday. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Vice President Tui.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Well, I too want to thank everybody who sends comments, emails, and comes to our meetings. It really means a lot that you're engaged and talking with us. So really, thank you so much for all of that. Did attend the Council of Neighborhood Meeting on Monday and we had a great presentation by Christina Curtis with the Everett Bike Program. And we've just been awarded a Bronze Level City by Bicycle Friendly Community and it's for communities with impressive commitments to bicycling. So at some point, if when we can fit that in, a briefing, I think it would be great because we're actually doing a lot of work on that plan. So that was really exciting to see. We just had our Safe Community Committee meeting before this meeting and we were discussing about traffic calming. And I want to congratulate Ryan's team. They were awarded a $700,000 grant from U.S. DOT for what's called Safe Streets for All. It's to provide a Vision Zero safety plan for our streets, which includes pedestrians, bikes, intersections, traffic calming, all of that will be rolled into that. So we should see that probably within 12 months. I think I'm right on that, Ryan, something like that. So that will be a great start to really kind of capture, analyze all kinds of ways that we can make sure our streets are safe for everybody. So congratulations to Ryan's team. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwab.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the mayor's staff. She formed a committee to deal with the project labor agreements with large city infrastructure projects. And I think the committee's going well and a lot of different opinions, a lot of diverse opinions and diverse groups represented. And I'm looking forward to the recommendations that they'll bring back. So that's moving along quite nicely. Also, I attended and remember, also with Councilmember Zarlingo, the Snohomish County Cities. And it's a work group that's trying to tackle some of the same challenges we have here in Everett regionally. We are not alone in the challenges that we have here. So it's really important that we work with our neighboring cities and our county. And so this organization, we had a presentation from another regional committee. It's called the Pigeon Sound Regional Council. So the four counties and the cities, we're doing everything we can to work together to solve some of our challenges. I too want to thank everyone here tonight for speaking. And it's great to hear emails too, but I love everybody in person too, because I like to put a face to the email. And just for the record, I do read every email. And I know you get lots of colorful comments and I appreciate those too. And I appreciate, and I've always said, and I keep saying almost like every week, the passion that we all have for not only our community that we live in, but also those that don't have a place to rest their head at night. So I just want to thank everybody for that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogli.
Good evening, everyone. I also want to thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers Zarlingo, for putting forth the recommendation for Station A. I know it's not a done deal, but at least getting it out there as a possible study option is fantastic and I really appreciate that. So thank you. And of course, thank you for all of the comments that come into the email. I was looking through my junk mail and found some more, so that might be why I haven't responded, or it's been busy. So I just want you to know that I also do read those and I appreciate all of the comments, colorful or colorless. And I was at the Transportation Advisory Committee where we heard about what Ms. Townsall already told us, the, da-da-da-da, where is it? The electric buses and moving forward for our climate. And I think it was that day, actually, at 11:30. So we met and then he went off to receive the award. And then, of course, we also heard about the Vision Zero and the TAC, the Transportation Advisory Committee Group, actually split into two groups that day to start brainstorming all of the wonderful things that can get us to Vision Zero. And Vision Zero is envisioning zero deaths of pedestrian, of really anyone having to do with traffic. And what I haven't heard yet tonight, so I think this will be news in our police report there, it's festival season and we have received, as the city, as the law enforcement, the Archer 1200. And that, those are regionally shared and will certainly block large or any motor vehicle from going into a crowd of people, much better than any other barrier that there has ever been. So that was exciting to hear. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have a couple of things. First, I wanted to announce that Item 1, under our consent agenda, has been pulled from the agenda tonight, so we will not take that up this evening. Then I also wanted to comment on the item that Mr. Jim Langus brought forward last week and this related to police staffing. I, as we begin the budget process, I think it would be really beneficial for us to look at where we're at currently. And we talk about police a lot, but also as we're thinking about growing, you know, there may be more resources needed and not only in the police department, but really let's look citywide. I know the Planning Department probably has some needs that will be coming up if we're looking at having more growth in housing. And so it'd be really nice for us to take stock of where we're at, where we need to be and kind of help us understand what the gap is from a staffing perspective and then also probably from the financial perspective. And I can't remember where we're at on the grant that we received for adding police officers as well. I know that was a multi-year grant, so it'd be nice for us to kind of catch up on all of that.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'd love to bring that into this budget process. We can't, you know, project our budgets accurately far into the future, but we certainly can project a lot of our needs. And you mentioned two departments that we have great need for growth with the future growth of the city. The COPS grant, we have recently asked for an extension because we have, you know, we're still in this hiring phase. And so we have to kind of hire slowly because otherwise we're just using that grant to backfill other positions. So we haven't been able to utilize those grant dollars. We don't want to lose those grant dollars. So Officer Robelis is doing everything he can to recruit as fast as he can, but only quality officers. And I'll have somebody give you a full update probably in a message, a council digest.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. And now do we have an administrative update this evening, Jennifer?
I don't have anything, but Planning Director Stevens-Watch is here for just a couple little changes on the, one of the incentive ordinances that is on second reading and for passage proposed next week.
So go ahead.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Council President Stonecifer and the council. I'm York Stevens-Watch, the Planning Director. Just wanted to highlight for you a staff-proposed amendment on Item 12, Council Bill 230427, regarding limited property tax exemptions for new multi-unit housing. The proposed ordinance in your packet today includes a new Section 040 that would allow extension of expiring tax exemptions, which is a new option that was added by the state legislature for cities in the 2021 session. Extentions would require the same level of affordability as a new 12-year exemption, which is 10% of the units affordable to households earning up to 60% of the area median income and another 10% affordable to households earning 80% of the area median income. Staff and our consultant continued to look at the value of this extension a little bit closer after forwarding it to the council and concluded that deeper affordability for that segment, this is just extending a property that has already had the extension, would be more appropriate in return for the value of the exemption. So accordingly, you will see in your packets next week, this staff-proposed amendment, and there's a public hearing next week on this ordinance, will reflect a change that would require 20% of the units to be affordable to 50% area median income. So it was 20%, 10%, 60%, 10% to 80. It seems more appropriate to go 20% to 50. There's a little bit more value to extending that tax exemption and so it would seem appropriate to get more public benefit in terms of affordability. That section is on page eight of the ordinance. We'll flag that on the city website and in an email to you for the details. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear and out there for the public. That's all I got.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay.
Motion to amend.
No, I don't believe we do that.
The agenda itself tonight is not updated, so it's just flagging it for you to notice.
So we'll make an amendment next week?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's on for proposed action.
All right, thanks.
We'll come back as amended, I assume?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Councilmember Zarlingo.
Well, just a brief comment that the real critical with you in this is getting the stuff built. I mean, we can allow it. It's a little like our hiring for the police department. We can allow it and then getting it actually done is a heavy lift.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to City Attorney, Mr. Hall. What do you have first this evening?
There is no report from the legal department and we are not requesting an executive session tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We will take up our consent agenda now. We are looking, again, Item 1 has been pulled, so we will look at the six remaining consent items, number 2 through 7. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Councilmember Ryan moves approval of consent agenda items 2 through 7.
Seconded.
Thank you. A motion and a second to approve. Quickly, please take your role.
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. The rest of our agenda is our all-proposed action items, Items 8 through 15. All were read into the record last week, so I don't need to read anything into the record. But we do have updated briefings on Items 14 and 15. So before we move on to those two items, I'll just ask, do we have any questions related to proposed action Items 8 through 13? Seeing none, we will now move on to Item 14. I'll read it because we're going to have an updated briefing. This is Council Bill 2304-29. It's a second reading, adopting ordinance prohibiting public consumption of controlled substances, amending Chapter 10.35 EMC. Again, the third and final reading will be next Wednesday on May 3rd.
And I'd like to invite City Attorney Lacy Offit up.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I think she'll be joined by Community Development Director Julie Willey.
Thank you, Mayor. You do, President Stonecifer and Councilmember, stick with Mike Tom.
Thank you. Yes, with regard to the public use of controlled substances, I'll provide a very brief update. Many of you are very well aware that our state legislative session wrapped up just this last weekend. And so you will see some adjustments to the proposed ordinance in light of that. So as you are well aware, but I do want to make sure is in the record, the legislature adjourned without passing a Blake replacement bill. Obviously, we cannot predict what the future may hold with regard to a special session and a fix before July 1st, when the existing controlled substance legislation sunsets. However, there is a very real possibility, more real than it was last week, that local governments will be left to legislate on their own. So given that, the one amendment of substance that you will see in the proposed ordinance before you tonight should be in your council packet, is that the present ordinance is now styled as a gross misdemeanor as opposed to a misdemeanor. And you'll recall that the difference between a misdemeanor and a gross misdemeanor is the maximum sentence allowed under the law, 90 days, as opposed to 364 days.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments for Lacy? Councilmember Vogli? Councilmember Vogli?
I have a general question to make sure I'm asking my questions at the right time. Are we going to hear from public and then do all of our talking?
Yes, we can, you can ask questions now, then we will have the public speak, and then you'll have another round of asking questions or clarifying or making comments.
I will hold.
Thank you. And so Deb Williams, who do we have signed up to speak on this item?
So President Stonecifer, just a question regarding pro-call. So we have several people signed up to speak, both on 14 and 15. We've got a handful that want to speak on 14, a handful that want to speak on 15. I'm just wondering if you want to do 15 as well and then start calling all these people up since they've signed up for both?
That sounds like a good plan. Thank you for that clarification. So I will read Council, Item Number 15, Council Bill 2304-30. This is a second reading. Adopting ordinance relating to public health and safety, creating service facility buffer zones for social service providers, shelter and temporary housing providers and other high-impact areas, and amending Title IX of the Everett Municipal Code by enacting a new Chapter 9.54 EMC. This is also going to have its third and final reading next Wednesday on May 3rd. And Julie, do you have comments on this for us?
We actually are bringing Lacy back up. Last week, when you, when we discussed it for the first, you had a couple of items that you wanted us to readdress, so we're bringing that forward with legal first.
Thank you. Welcome back, Lacy.
Thank you. And Lacy Offit, Assistant City Attorney. Again, I will very briefly highlight some changes that we made to the ordinance before you, based on council feedback as well as feedback from the public. We did make some adjustments in a couple of areas. Just to highlight those, we did make adjustments to the definition of buffer zones with the goal of making those zones more intuitive, more knowable in advance, and accounting for concerns that were raised regarding conflicts of uses on certain public property, such as restaurants that have outdoor eating areas. The other thing that was largely changed is allowing for some objective criteria to be met before establishing those zones. You'll find that in both the manner in which the mayor designates those zones, allowing for certain thresholds to be met before an area could be designated, as well as in the definitions and what that criteria specifically is.
Thank you. Any questions before we go to public comment? Councilmember Schwab?
Yeah, thank you. So a couple, three questions. I'll just start with the first one. So we have a new two-block buffer change then. I have a PowerPoint here. Is this the latest diagram? It's got some blue dots on it. Sorry, have we got a lot of information?
Yeah, no, no, not at all. We do have that information. Last week, we were here and we showed one definition of how we might define the buffer zones, and you asked us to come back with a two-block radius. So we have maps, that was what we showed you last week. This week, we can show you the maps with the overlay of what that two-block radius will look like. I can kind of quickly go through them for you. This being the Gospel Mission existing site of the Congregate Shelter in the Palat. You can see behind the stripes are the, what we showed you last week, and then the blue is the two-block radius. Lacy can talk further about what a block is, but in our city, we have a lot of different block sizes. And so for tonight's demonstration of what a two-block radius looks like, we went to the traditional North Everett block size, which is 560 feet, I believe, and we times that by two, and so that's the size of a two-block radius. If we go to the south end, some of those blocks are triple that size, and so that's kind of why we just picked one block to give you perspective. So this is the Everett Mall, the former Days Inn where the county is developing a shelter. That's what that would look like. It crosses over I-5, which is a, not necessarily an area that's totally affected, but nonetheless, it shows you the difference. This is the Faith Family Village area and the SEMEX site with VOA. And then this is the current UCC shelter that is downtown on 2600 block of Rockefeller.
Great, thank you. And to go along with that, my understanding that the city of Tacoma has nine service providers and they're adding a 10th. And did you, do you know what they use for a radius?
Their radius, I believe, is actually 10 blocks, but it's not, it's not tied to service providers in the same way that ours is. So it is different enough that the comparison between two blocks and 10 blocks is maybe not the most useful, but it is a much bigger block radius. I can also speak to Spokane's ordinance that is similar. Theirs is a two-block radius.
Okay, thank you. And then one more question, just because these, this map is just a proposal. We have, the mayor hasn't decided that these five sites are going to do this. That's, that's a process we're going to work later, correct?
Yeah, it's not a proposal. They're just drafts of ideas that you would see. We have not designated any site. I think the mayor has an idea. We have one site that has continued to cause a lot of challenges for the neighborhood and for the residents of the shelter that may be kind of top on the list. But other than that, there's not any determined or discussions around sites.
And then I guess, did I say three? I've got one more. That was a little too hard on a hmm hmm. I guess, in your evaluation of how Spokane and Tacoma were doing, did theirs, how does it compare? Do we have some successes? Did we learn from some of their ordinances, some of their, you know?
I can say that in my reading of both ordinances, they, each city took careful consideration of the constitutional boundaries that were set in place by the Barton v. Boise case, both of those ordinances passed following that, that case law that came out. And so I have not had a chance to speak with anybody from Spokane, but I did very briefly have an email conversation with some representatives from Tacoma, and in their view, it's been successful. They, they have not had any challenges in the implementation or, at this point, I don't, they didn't provide a great deal of detail, but it didn't sound as if they had been challenged in either criminal or civil realms.
Thank you.
Vice President Tuohy?
Just a quick question, a follow-up on that. Do we, how many, do you know how many different buffer zones, like say Tacoma, has, has put in place?
I don't, actually. I'd be happy to see if I can find that information.
Nine? Okay, never mind. He knew. Thank you. Nine.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you. While we're on the blocks topic, I'll save other questions for after public comment, but I'm curious if there's maybe a happy medium because the, last week, there were concerns that were shared about using the circle radius as a unit of measurement because how are people going to measure 37th street down, 37 feet down the street or whatnot? So I would act, I'd probably tap into York's bright brain on different ways that, an easier way to have both the radius and a square at the same time so that it is lessening the confusion of, you know, where is the epicenter and how far down the street is the buffer zone? Is there need to be a sign at that exact point or whatnot? So just a more, just a, somewhere in the middle between streets, circles, and eliminating a sidewalk as a unit of measurement. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? We'll take our public comments now.
Okay, when I call your name, if you please come up to the podium and please give your name and your city of residence, and I'm going to start with Mark Graham. Mr. Graham, please remember to limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, and everybody not sitting on a soft chair. My name's Mark and I'm homeless. The state classifies me as homeless. I'm at the top of the level, though. I live in a travel trailer. I've been circulating amongst the homeless of the city for the past month, riding the buses, talking to them, sitting with them in parks. You guys are missing the point. So I'm going to address the first, first law, which is the lock 'em up law. It doesn't work. I've caught this bus right out here, the blue line, and watched people who just got out of jail get high. It doesn't work. Locking them up doesn't work. We need to follow Portugal's example, decriminalize all drugs, and take that money you were locking them up with and put it into treatment centers and education. Their drug use was reduced by 80% with that model. That's a big number. There will always be people who want to use substances, but that would be definitely something you want to look at, at 80%. And now I'll talk to the NIMBY law. They're already in your neighborhoods, people. They're hiding in your alleyways. They're hiding behind umbrellas, smoking fentanyl. I live right now on Highway 99 and Airport Road. I have watched them smoke fentanyl right by propane tanks. They have no thought for their safety because they're homeless. Every housing-first initiative has improved people's quality of life in every area by 20% or more just by taking housing off the plate. Here's my cards. Give me a building and I swear to you, I will get you free materials and free labor, and we will build homeless shelters. It's your call.
Any other comments? Penelope?
Hi, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Penelope Prothero. I'm going to start this timer here. I am the founder and president of Angel Resource Connection. We're a nonprofit. I'm in Granite Falls is where our headquarters is at, but we've been serving Everett for seven years. We cook food out of a commercial kitchen, big, deep casseroles out, and we serve people hot food. We're also known for providing people with sleeping bags. We're one of the people that helps people survive hypothermia. So my sister died of hypothermia at 50. She was a domestic abuse situation. She left the front door. She walked out into terrible weather, afraid to go back, and she got caught overnight and she was found dead. So one of the things that I see here is that obviously I am not for this ordinance because of so many reasons. I do not feel it, it meets, solves a problem that you think it does. So many people are homeless out there, not because of drugs. So I think everybody's like compartmentalizing this and thinking that's the problem. So in our seven years of serving people, the people that we find, and we do food, clothing, and shelter for people, getting them housing, is, it's a money problem. So many people that we meet do not have enough money for first, last, and rent, deposit. What happens is something happened in their situation where they got ousted out of their apartment or home, and then they just can't create that. Their partner died, divorce, the landlord sold the home, something. They weren't able to get a grip and get back on track. So right now, we're kind of like just saying, there's a few bad apples, kind of spoiling it for the homeless in Everett, and that's creating a restriction of freedom for all the homeless. That's what this ordinance is doing. I'd like you to really take a look at this emperor has no clothes problem here because it's really not about, everybody's a drug addict and causing problems, so let's get them all, you know, move them to another neighborhood. And then what happens when you move them to another neighborhood, right, is, you know, then it becomes the problem of that neighborhood, a mom and a dad and a family, and it's just neighbors. Their front yard, their backyard now has homeless people. Instead, what you have is all these, all these well-established, good-hearted organizations ready to serve, DSHs, all these churches, ready to receive people, but then you're going to say, don't sit here, don't put down your backpack, don't get comfortable, come for your service and leave. But they're magnetized to come to that spot because they're desperate and they're wanting food. You know, food really draws where the homeless go. They're hungry all of the time. So I thought, is that three minutes? Oh, that went by way too fast. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Roxana?
My name is Roxana, and I am Director of the nonprofit Faith Food Bank, manager of a community meal at Faith Lutheran Church, and a representative on the board for Faith Family Village. And Faith Family Village is only for families with kids. But I'm also the owner of Fun Times Ice Cream. I've been in, at Everett Parks for 25 years, and hopefully this year I will finally retire. At the last meeting, I was surprised to learn that the city is thinking about including my nonprofit in the no-sit-no-lie zone. Usually, these zones mean no food providers, which could end our meal for 180 people every week, and end our food bank, which feeds over 1,000 people every week, along with the families who will be dining at the Palat Village. Faith Lutheran Church and Faith Food Bank do not want to be in the no-sit-no-lie zone. In the last 10 years, we've called the police four times. We, if we have problems, we take care of the problems ourselves. We do not need this zone. And when the city says we're going to make a no-sit-no-lie zone there, it implies that the city is expecting trouble. I don't know where you got that idea from because we really don't have trouble there and we don't need your help. So I urge the council and the mayor to please take Faith Family Village off your list. And I encourage you to involve nonprofits and businesses first before you assign them as a no-sit-no-lie zone. This shouldn't be something forced when nonprofits don't feel it's needed. But I'd also like to talk about, at the Everett Parks, I've been there 25 years. In the last three years, we've seen a lot of increased drug use there. And there's fewer and fewer park rangers who are extremely overworked and underpaid who try to resolve these issues, but they really don't have the power to really do anything. So what the parks have decided is they'll close the bathrooms so that the people can't go there and do drugs. This is especially true at Silver Lake. And so that means that children also can't go in there to use the bathroom. So they end up peeing in public, and the, the drug users are also in public. So if you want a no-sit-no-lie zone, please try Forest Park. That, you'll get more results there than you will from Faith Family Village. So I thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
President Stonecifer, I'd just like to make a comment and correct. So the maps that you saw are not what, where these zones are going. Those were simply examples. And so the, the best examples for us to use to show the public what these would look like were to poll shelters. The city of Everett would only designate a, a buffer zone around a, a shelter or service center where we were seeing those types of problems. I'm very familiar with your organization. We have other shelters where there's zero problems outside. Those types of, they're not needed there. So they're really... So, they're really, the proposal is for where there's high criminal activity or other things that are causing problems. So, I appreciate your comments and thank you.
So, I understand when you say that, when you say that. But when the public hears city officials say Faith Family Village in a, they assume that that's already a done deal. So, if you could remove our name, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Randy Hansen?
Mrs. Mayor, Council, Randy Hansen, class of 1957, General Hospital in Everett. Never left and have a business here of 35-plus years. And I'm here, just to be brief, that I'm supporting that item 14 in that ordinance. The things that I've seen, our office has been downtown for years, and particularly the last year, I've had more and more activity. Last month, I think I've sent all of you two different notes on experiences that I have had. And maybe the most unearthing experience for me came that I did not mention to you, and that is, I was walking down Colby, and there was a young lady, looked homeless, on the ground, and a young man who was kicking at her, and words were really flying. He was aggressive. And I walked up and I stopped, and he looked at me and said, "What?" And I probably won't make this mistake again, but I said, "Not today, pal." And he looked at me and he had a couple words for her and he walked off. And I say I probably won't make that mistake again because after the counsel of my 43-year-old bride, she's not allowing me to do that anymore. And one of the real problems that I see is that, we used to live, you know, this was a community, and we lived in a community that people looked out for people. And you really can't do that anymore because of the risk of, that guy was 25-years-old, bigger than me, and, I mean, he could've killed me right there, right? People are stepping away when people need help. And so, this young lady's comments about helping the people that need help, boy, that strikes me in the heart. I think, and always have thought, we need to help the people that need help, that want help. But I also think somehow we have to continue to try hard to find those imposters, bad guys, whatever you want to refer to them as, and we need to figure out how to weed them out. And I feel like item 14 is a good start for a direction that I think we need to keep going, and I would just encourage all of you to not give up on item 14. Let's continue to try to figure out how to be more aggressive with the people that are causing the problems in our great community. Thank you.
Brian Olson?
Good evening, Mayor Franklin and City Council. I'd like to thank you for serving here in the city of Everett. I also have lived here my entire life, and I am the owner of Olson Investment and Management, property management company, and own a fair amount of property within the city of Everett in Snohomish County. We have a serious problem today, and I think it isn't an issue of being Democrat or Republican. I think we can all agree that the safety of ourselves, and more importantly, of our kids and our grandchildren are at risk. And it's one thing when I see in front of our businesses and businesses of shopping centers that I own, and they can't get into their, into their business, or customers can't get out of the business, and they feel unsafe. And so, that affects being able to employ people. It affects people coming into the properties that I have, their businesses, of wanting to support those businesses. And I feel for every person that's homeless, and I know that we can do something together. And it's gonna take a team. But there also has to be excessive bill, there's, today, you know, I look at back, why is it like this today? Why wasn't this present back when, 20 years ago? And I look and I see that the accessibility to drugs is much greater than it's probably ever been. The accountability for the criminals is not there. We need more police officers and we need to empower them to be able to do their jobs. And there needs to be accountability for breaking the law. And it's really not a lot different than raising your kids. If there's no accountability and there's no consequences, what are the results? You continue to get the same results. So, we need to enforce the law. And we need to help those that are homeless. We need to help those that cannot get food. And we can do that as a city, we can do that as a county. If you look, the money that we spend within our organization for security cameras, fencing, patrol, landscaping today is not a once-a-week job. We have landscapers come into our facilities every single day to pick up the parking lot, to pick up the flower beds, to remove or ask, you know, the homeless people to move so that people can get into their businesses. But I know that we can change this, and I'm not gonna give up on this. I mean, if I have to, I'll be at every one of these meetings. But I do support this, and I don't think it's the answer, but I think it's the beginning of something, that we can change this and make this the city that we all grew up in. Anyway, my time's up. Thank you very much.
Rory Klein?
Council, Mayor, I'm Rory Klein. Everett, I've been here my entire life, and I just wanted to say I'm highly supportive of item number 14. And the reason why I'm highly supportive of item number 14 is that I think it's the start. It's the start to what needs to get done, to show our next generation coming up that, you know, we do care, and that there is gonna be some form of consequences when, you know, they see someone openly using drugs in the middle of the street or outside of a business or in some places in front of a school. And I've had many conversations with not only my kids, but my nephews and nieces where they ask me the question, "Why is that person doing that and not getting in trouble?" And so, you know, the innocence of a child seeing that and wondering, knowing what's right and wrong. So, I'm highly supportive of 14, of putting in place some form of a consequence. And especially, you know, I think we need to reiterate that since our state legislatures, we haven't passed anything, coming July 1st, there's nothing in place. So, it is up to us in the city to have something in place. Thank you.
Bob Fankhauser?
Good evening, I'm Bob Fankhauser, and I grew up in Everett and was a business owner in Everett for many years. And I just, the previous comments say it all for me, but I just offer my support for number 14. So, thank you.
I know I'm gonna say this name wrong. Stuart Weback?
That's all good. I'm kind of used to it. My name is Stuart Weback. I live here in Everett, Washington. When you go to the doctor, say you have some type of disease or you seek medical treatment for whatever reason, the doctor does not merely treat your symptoms. They treat the disease at its source. Items 14 and 15 aren't doing that. They are doing what many would consider an illogical approach. These items merely attack the symptoms. Item 15 would push the problem out from one central area out to a wider dispersed area, making it harder to contain violent outbursts. Item 14, all that does is send people into hiding, making it harder for medical teams, making it harder for first responders to locate them and save their life. I strongly urge each and every one of you to vote against both of these items. Thank you.
Cordelia Weback?
Council, Mayor, my name is Cordelia, 2900 Grand Avenue. You heard from me last week, but I'm back. I'm gonna start with items 14. Item 14, I know, I'm sure everyone here in this room is aware that the drugs these people are doing are already illegal. They're illegally obtained. So, if you think for a second that banning public consumption of them is gonna get people to stop doing illegal things, they're not. If anything, I would much rather see someone that overdosed that I can save with the Narcan I carry on me than find someone dead behind my house or a business, because that's what's gonna happen. If we ban public consumption of drugs, people are not gonna stop doing drugs. They're not. And a little bit closer to home, I wanna talk about one of my family members who got addicted to drugs and was forced into treatment. He did very well in treatment. He did great. He did everything that he needed to do to get out, and then he got out. He's dead now, overdose. And that's what happens when you force people into treatment when they don't wanna go. People die. Because statistically, people are more likely to go back to their drugs when they are forced into treatment rather than when they go on their own accord. Now, as far, as far as item 15, it is within my constitutional right to feed people. It is. And I find it a little interesting that this is being proposed, and that if the council's in support of this, it's crazy to me because the council is the same council that said that the buffer zones around Planned Parenthood were unconstitutional, which was brought up last week by one of the council members. So, I find it interesting that we can say that someone harassing a patient is fine, but someone feeding someone is not okay. Item 15 will do exactly nothing productive. It will push people out into different areas of Everett. It will prevent people from getting treatment, and it will put people in an area, possibly jail, where you're gonna have people that are there because they're homeless and they're with criminals. Imagine sitting at a table and you're like, "Oh, what did you do? I robbed someone. I killed someone. I was homeless." We're gonna criminalize people. And I wanna, I wanna talk about the fact that some people in this room are probably one paycheck away from being homeless, one job away from being homeless. Put yourself in their shoes. Their existence is being criminalized. That's all.
Carol Jensen?
Mayor, Council, Carol Jensen, District 2 in Everett, speaking on my own behalf, not representing anybody, to number 15, to that ordinance about service facility buffer zones. I appreciate that the city administration and the council have a daunting task in addressing the challenges of homelessness and drug activity in our city, which are not equivalent, not unrelated, but not equivalent. Really important. I have considerable concern, though, about this ordinance and how it might be used. I think the title of it is a little misleading, 'cause it's not only about creating no-sit-no-lie zones around service facilities or proposed service facilities, it would also allow the designation of such zones in areas, this is quote from, "Those areas highly impacted by street-level issues." And so, this could open up large areas of our city. It's already been said, too, no-sit-no-lie zones. At the discretion of the mayor's office, there are criteria, I understand, but it's, that's concerning. And what it basically does, and this is, you know, what the previous speaker also said, is that, I mean, this doesn't target drug use. It, you know, it basically targets people that don't have a place to live, and it's a very broad brush. And so, it can potentially criminalize homelessness, whether or not the person has anything to do with drugs at all. And, well, it's explained on the one hand as protecting vulnerable people seeking services. It's also clearly response to property owners who face challenges from crime in the places where they live and work, which we've heard about, and these are really legitimate concerns. I'm a property owner myself. I live very close to downtown, and it is scary outside a lot of times. But I'm concerned that this ordinance will prioritize those voices over the voices of service providers, of those receiving services, and those who we hope will receive services. And so much is in flux right now with the failure of 5536. It's just huge, so disappointing. I watched it on TV, the failure. And I supported that bill, as did our chief of police and I know the staff. And it would've given more tools to law enforcement related to drugs as well as strengthening treatment services. So, I want to encourage the council to, to look at measures that address drugs and drug sales and the use of drugs. I'm not gonna speak directly to 14, but that certainly does that. And looking at those possibilities in high-impact areas rather than giving the mayor's office a tool that could criminalize someone lying down on a sidewalk because they don't have a place that they can call home, that they can sleep. So, the voices of service providers, people living on the streets, and property owners all need to be heard and given weight. It's not an easy job. To say in conclusion that the human worth of each person living on the street, including those who use drugs and are mentally ill, needs to be acknowledged, their human worth. Thank you for your service, thank you for your consideration.
And my last speaker is Joe's Lab?
Joe's Lab, I live in Lake Forest Park. I work and own property in Everett, Washington. Thank you for your time, council members, and your service, and also Mayor Franklin. So, I had a whole bunch of prepared notes about, you know, the litany of all the trouble that's going on downtown. I was at a downtown association meeting a few weeks ago where I found out that, hey, basically, everyone with a business downtown is kind of suffering the same issues. You know, it's, there's a lot of mayhem going on. And, you know, I can read a bunch of statements from people I talk to. I walk around the neighborhood, I talk to a lot of people, and it's, you know, it's pretty wrenching stuff. I mean, but you've already heard it probably, right? I mean, poop in the doorways, broken windows, assaults. I have renters that, you know, the car gets ripped off and broken into, and so, the problem is, is these people who wanna live downtown, and we're talking downtown like 2,600 block of Rockefeller, when their lease comes up at the end of the year, they're out of there. They're like, you know, "I'm not getting my value as a renter here. These are, you know, we wanna build community downtown. We want people who wanna shop, have fun, feel safe downtown." And currently, that's not happening right now. And, and I don't wanna get up here and just pound about law and order, law and order, because, I mean, that's not what this is about. I think, you know, when you read these two, you know, 14 and 15, especially 15, you see it's not a binary solution of like, we're gonna go throw everyone in jail who's sitting a line within, you know, two blocks of a center. No, this is giving tools to the public officials No, this is giving tools to the public officials to go out and address situations. My sister-in-law lived on, on the Rockefeller block for, for years, in one of those homes that, you know, we were eventually going to develop. And she's terrified sometimes about what's going on out there in the street. I have renters complaining, like, you know, they're screaming at three in the morning, at, at, at the wall, the sky themselves, you know, someone up in a window. And it's like, we need to be able to call in the law enforcement to protect these residents that live there, especially if they've got kids on the block. Sorry, brain freeze, but I, I, I worked in, you know, with the, the shelter on 2600 Rockefeller this, this past year, in 2022. And I talked to residents who lived there. I talked to the staff members. And they're like, "Yeah, we ask all these people to not, like, conglomerate around, but because there's a lot of food and services going on there, it draws in people." And not all of them are good people. You know, a lot of them have, you know, break-in tools in their backpacks. And the people who live in the shelter, I talked to, you know, some of these people, you know, women, young men, they're being trafficked at times. This is not a pretty situation. They don't feel safe by a lot of these people who come in and prey on these areas. And I talked to the police officers, and they're like, "Keep on, you know, doing emails and phone calls and showing up to the council, because we need the tools." You know, this ordinance gives the mayor designation of, you know, which agencies can come in and provide food and which ones can't. You know, I, you know, I'm not saying that we need to have a big police state here, but it's like, the city council needs to vote in the tools for the public servants to do their job when a resident on some block feels unsafe. I was talking to a person who does these pop-up feeds down in South Everett, like on Casino Road a while ago. And he was shocked that, and this is a great person, I mean, give this shirt off your back kind of guy. He was shocked that the Jack-in-the-Box owner down there, you know, by the Rite Aid down there, the, the Jack-in-the-Box manager or owner came out and was like yelling at him, like, "Get out of here, get out of here." And he was like shocked, like, "Why would they do that?" And I explained to him, "Well, you're drawing in a lot of people that are gonna keep on coming back tomorrow looking for the same pizza, and they're gonna be, you know, leaving a needle there, and they're gonna be leaving tinfoil there and poop in between, and no one wants to come to Jack-in-the-Box while that's going on." So, and, so, so that's why the city needs to be able to designate some of these pop-up situations and, and bring in officers when they need to be there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And President Stansfield, that's all I have. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
It, it might be useful if I make just a couple of brief comments on the constitutionality of the service facility buffer ordinance, because that was raised in comments.
Thank you. That would be helpful.
Sure. First comment is just, as a general matter, this is an area of law that's pretty dynamic. It is changing constantly. But we, meaning primarily Lacey Offit, not myself, has vetted this very thoroughly against current case law, which means primarily the Boise v. Martin case, more recently, the Grants Pass case. And we're pretty confident that it meets constitutional standards, of course, or we wouldn't be bringing this forward. And then in response, more specifically to Ms. Weback, I'll get her name wrong too, Ms. Weback's comment about, or question about the First Amendment issue and whether the provision of food, prohibition violates the First Amendment, comparing that with the Planned Parenthood buffer zones. The difference is that the buffer issue on Planned Parenthood or any similar facility involves actual speech, whether protesters can pass out pamphlets or otherwise use speech to make their, their view known. It's pretty well established in the case law that the provision of food, especially in an area that's already overburdened by street-level social issues, which is what we're considering here, is not expressive conduct, which is the term of art, certainly not, not speech. So that is something that we've looked at very carefully. And my third comment, which is maybe the most useful, is that maybe Lacey has some more detailed information, if you've got more questions.
Very good. Thank you. That's helpful. I'll go to council comments, questions. Councilmember Ryan, would you like to begin?
Sure. Are we gonna, I just wanted to clarify if we're taking up a discussion on one item first and then switching to the other?
Well, you can go, but all of both, fourteen and fifteen, you can speak on both.
Great. I'll let somebody else go first.
Okay.
I will say something.
Councilmember Volkley.
Whew, boy. Okay. Thank you, everyone. A lot of people have left, but I appreciate their words. And so I just want you to know that. I wrote some things, but I don't know if they're worthy. So regarding the service facility buffer zones, these are kind of some questions. In the whereas parts, B and C states that the city council is committed to having adequate shelter, mental health treatment, drug treatment, emergency shelter, and permanent housing for its residents. And while I know that that is accurate, we are committed, I am wondering if, I think maybe Julie, you might have been asked, but now I can't remember. Do we have a list of the adequate shelters, mental health treatments, drug treatments, emergency shelters, and permanent housing that is available for, like, if the buffer zone was there and the law enforcement was called, you know, where can people go to get services? Like, where's that list? Is it online? I don't, I didn't ask you earlier, so I don't expect you to have the list to hand out, but...
Well, certainly, part of the work of our COET team for years has been to be able to connect people to services. And then when the Blake decision happened a couple of years ago, it was required that services were provided. So our law enforcement are equipped with a handout tool to try and, you know, help people find access to services. We, you know, when you say "we," do we have a list of shelters? Certainly, we have a list of shelters. We have 2-1-1. We have, you know, a variety of, you know, our library has a great resource page, so we have access to our services. But do people living on the streets access them? And we also know that we have a absence of enough treatment facilities, in particular for those that are, are suffering with opioid treatment and detox and then relapse and all of those things that are entailed. And that's some of our future work, is to really identify that and to try and work with our regional partners to bring more treatment to our county, because it's our entire county that is absent. And I guess, I also just wanna, like, it's, we're talking about these two different ordinances like they are the same, but they aren't. You know, one is really addressing open-air drug use of an illegal substance. And the concerns for those that are living addicted are, are heard, and we know that they need services and shelter and treatment. But we are also talking about our residents and our businesses and our children, who are suffering as well by experiencing the trauma related to watching people do drugs, sell drugs, and the behaviors that follow that. And so I am a Everett resident, and I too am scared to walk on the streets and have experienced very scary things. So the buffer zone is, is not necessarily about those individuals. It's about having high-quality, best-practices services, so that we can do our best for those that are in need, and making sure that those facilities have the tools that they need to keep their services, the people that are taking the services, safe, as well as making sure that the neighbors and the businesses are proud to have that service in their community, because they have compassion and they care deeply about people. But they don't want to have that magnet or those pop-up services in their backyards or in their parks or in their public rideaways that draw people that aren't, like, seeking services. So, you know, I appreciate that we're trying to put them all together, but they're also kind of meeting two different needs. So, not sure that I was allowed to say all that, but, sorry. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. That's helpful.
Thanks. Can I, can, yes, please. Okay. Okay, so we have 2-1-1, the library, a COET, that have that information. Let's see. The whereas G part states that street-level social issues can decrease a neighborhood's willingness to host treatment or housing services. I understand that, especially considering the recent Hope Church possibility and the other recent Norton possibility and the, oh, what was it? The, not Catholic Community Services, but a triage, Compass Health Triage, and Claire's Place, although that was built. And really, just about anything that is built in our city has definitely, let's see, there's a decrease in a neighborhood's willingness to host, I think regardless of if there's a buffer or not. So I'm just stating that the whereas G really does push into the general duty, which is section six of just about every ordinance that the city has and probably everywhere in every municipality, to not designate any particular class who shall especially be protected or benefited. And then the M and N, I would need to look at it again, but in my reading it, it looks like they directly oppose each other. So I'm gonna look at that in a second, and I'll probably come back to that. So I'm gonna circle that and tell you why later they directly oppose each other. In the definitions of the buffer zones, I think it's just a typo, so I'm gonna say it, because it says NF, park museums. There's no comma, so I'm not sure if there's a park museum, or if it's parks and the museum. So that's no big deal. Establishing a service facility buffer zone, A and B, so that was the, I don't know the number right now, I was just saying the, the title. For establishing one, every six months or at such interval that the mayor determines reasonable. If this does go through, I would suggest that either every six months, period, because what the mayor determines reasonable is very subjective. And when it comes to no goods or services, it does say that a permit can be gotten from Public Works or other city department. I guess, what would that permit be called? And what other department besides Public Works would offer that permit, should it be requested?
Currently, the, the structure that we have is a Public Works permit. We also have an expressive use permit, like activities permit. So none of them necessarily, right now, encompass the outreach activities that we're seeing. And so that may be future legislation that we bring back to you, that we, assuming that that is a role of council, to determine a, a more proper permit that really delineates what activity they want to do, where they wanna do it, how long they wanna do it, who they wanna serve, what their plan is for trash pickup, what their plan is for, you know, neighborhood outreach and things like that. We don't yet have that. So right now, we've, we've only used the Public Works permit. And again, we only have this right now down by Smith Avenue. And, and we've had very few, I think we've had two people that have asked for a right-of-way use permit, and neither one of them were to do outreach services for individuals who are living unsheltered.
Okay. Thank you. I have mentioned section six already, and I will continue to mention it for all of our ordinances. Because these two, regardless of what some of the things say, they are designating a particular class who shall be especially protected or benefited. I'm gonna stop there for now and allow someone else to go.
Councilmember Ryan.
Great. First, I wanted to thank you for, Claire, for making it abundantly clear that these are separate ordinances and that even though we're considering them on the same schedule, they're not the same thing. So thank you for that reminder. I wanted to talk about the buffer zones, item number fifteen, kind of walk through a few different sections with questions and comments. Under definitions, nine dot fifty-four dot O one O, section G. I think it's also a typo, but it's referencing EMC nine dot fifty-four dot O two O A, but I think it's actually supposed to be C. And then in H, it's referencing the definition for designated qualifying high-impact locations. But I'm not seeing an actual definition listed before, so I think if that, I don't know if that actually got deleted at some point or if I'm just tired and totally missed it.
Lacey's gonna come up and answer that.
Yeah, don't go too far after you're done there.
So can you ask your second question again?
Sure. Under the definition section, section, letter H, it's referencing designated qualifying high-impact locations and then EMC blah 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 B, but I'm not seeing that in the definitions list earlier. I see service facility buffer zone, qualifying service provider, service location, but I'm not seeing a definition for high-impact zone, unless I'm missing that. I see definition for qualifying events.
So you're not?
I don't see a definition for designated qualifying high-impact location.
Okay. I think if I'm understanding your question correctly, that the answer is that the nine fifty-four O two O B is referencing the definition, so they're referencing one another to define one another. So designated qualifying high-impact location is the location as designated by the mayor later on in O three O. So I think, I think I see what your point is. It needs to be O three O in the definition, is what it should be.
Councilmember Ryan, are you asking what would make a designated high-impact zone? Am I understanding you correctly?
Under our list of definitions, there isn't a definition for that.
Yeah, I think, I think she's wanting to know what would make something qualify as a, as a designated area for a buffer zone. We talked about calls for service, things like that, so I think that's the question.
Yeah, and that is found in nine fifty-four O three O B. So the mayor then designates it as a qualifying high-impact location based on the criteria in that section and the qualifying event criteria in subsection J of the definitions.
Great. Thank you. Legal question for you. Letter J, qualifying event, lists that they're included could be reports from, credible reports made by members of the public. But it's, how, how is that allowed?
How would we determine what's credible?
Because it's my understanding that if somebody reports something that's happened that they see, and a police officer shows up and they're not seeing it, then nothing can happen, because it's kind of hearsay. So how is this allowed here?
For what you're referencing, that is true for criminal activities in a lot of circumstances. Under qualifying event four J, there are a number of ways that we can, in practice and in procedure, determine what is credible. My recommendation, if anybody is asking me, in the future, in the future, if this becomes law here in the city of Everett, would be something like it's signed, even if it's signed with a name and address for somebody who's making the, the complaint. Other ways that we could verify would be, you know, you have to provide your email address, or you sign under penalty of perjury what your complaint is. So there are a number of ways that we could, in practice, determine what is credible.
Let's see. Another legal question for you. Under the prohibition section, letter D, it talks about the violation of the section. Sections shall be misdemeanor punishable by ninety days of jail, fine, punishable. So I was curious if there is room in this section for a codification of encouraging people to enroll in a treatment court? Or if there's, or if that's something that happens automatically anyways?
I will say that it doesn't necessarily happen automatically, but I would be shocked if our prosecutor's office doesn't offer that in almost all circumstances, if not all circumstances. As a matter of practice, we do that very frequently with this type of, of criminal activity. Certainly, we could explore the possibility of having that either mandated or encouraged in the body of the ordinance.
And just for clarification, if a person does go through a treatment court process, then the misdemeanor would be removed from their record or lessened?
Yes, the existing diversion courts that we have, both MAP and the, the, I'm blanking on the name of it. Yeah. They do end in dismissal after a set period of time, yes.
Okay, thank you. Under establishing a buffer, the next section, establishing a service facility buffer zone, Under establishing a buffer, the next section, establishing a service facility buffer zone, um, designating a qualified service location, it mentions that, uh, the mayor may designate in writing one or more qualifying service locations. Um, I was just curious about the process of, um, what does, how does that happen? Who, is it a memo? What is designating and, designing and writing? I mean, I get it's actually like written or typed out, but who's the recipient of that notification?
I think it's just the general public. A, a lot of those details are more procedural than would be appropriate in the body of an ordinance. Do you have a thought on that?
I agree that it will all be part of the procedures moving forward. I think that if we, uh, kind of use an example of our, um, encampment emphasis areas for, uh, areas that have had repeated consistent problems, um, with a lot of calls for service, a lot of, uh, concerns from businesses and residents, or drive-bys, and people calling all the time to report, calling you all the time. What we've done in the past is we have multiple departments that have that information, compile it into one, um, kind of body of work, and we provide that to the mayor for, um, her approval of making that an encampment emphasis area. So we could model it after that. So that would include police, uh, public works who does our encampment response, um, our transit operators, our transit security, our community development staff, our social workers, you know, all of those individuals that could play into providing us with enough, um, verification and information to feel like it was worthy of, of this, um, as a, as a tool for success for the programs, yeah.
Great. I see with this in specific, um, been hearing from Roxanna tonight, and then Jason from last week about how they would like an option to opt out. So if there, if there's a way for, um, the property owner or the service provider to be included in that list of folks that would receive written notice, and then for them to have an opportunity to confirm or opt out, I think that would be a good win-win for everybody.
Our hope would be that they are such great service providers that we would never even consider them for a service facility buffer zone.
Uh, I agree with, uh, Councilor Vogel about, uh, removing the or such interval that the mayor determines reasonable. I think, um, that would avoid a set-it-and-forget-it type of situation. Um, thank you for providing the, the thresholds for, um, when a designated qualified service location might be designated. I'm curious, uh, how the, how the number six, how did you guys come up with the, that number? What's the, uh, reasoning behind that?
Uh, yeah, the, the, I guess it was a little bit of, uh, guesswork, to be honest with you, based on what we know, um, in administering our, um, chronic nuisance properties. As you very well know, we have a chronic nuisance code. Um, the chronic nuisance code requires, I think, three, um, three qualifying events, for lack of a better term, um, within the preceding sixty days, or seven within the preceding year. Um, so I utilized that as a guide, um, thinking that six would be, you know, certainly enough to show a pattern.
And then in section oh-five-oh about the service facility buffer zones, I noticed between last week's draft and this week's draft, there was a part taken out about how the , uh, maps will be updated annually. Um, so if the, my suggestion would be that if the mayor is reviewing the buffer zones and the facilities, uh, on a six-month basis, then maps would also be reviewed on a six-month basis as well, so just to have those two aligned, so, um, that's all I have for buffer zones. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other council member comments or questions?
I will take more time if nobody else has it.
I'll say just one thing, I, I'm impressed by the thoroughness of your staff, Mayor. So thank you very much. I mean, I, a lot of my questions were already answered, so, um, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vogel.
Okay. Um, going back to ordinance for service facility, whoops, going back to ordinance for service facility buffer zones, uh, the M and N that I spoke of earlier, so that's pursuant to Martin versus Boise and Johnson versus City of Grants Pass. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has determined that the United States Constitution prohibits the imposition of criminal penalties on homeless individuals who could not otherwise obtain shelter for sitting, sleeping, lying, or taking necessary minimal measures to protect oneself from the elements while outside on all public property within a jurisdiction, but then in, the city has the power to provide for the punishment of all practices dangerous to public health or safety, and to make necessary for the preservation of public health, peace, and good order, and to provide for the punishment of all persons charged with, I'm gonna go back to M, obtaining shelter, sleeping, lying, et cetera, in the public jurisdiction. Maybe I'm just reading it a certain way.
I think one, one thing to remember in that case is that, um, in this ordinance, um, and in our already adopted SLI ordinance, um, we're not prohibiting people from sitting or lying anywhere in the City of Everett. It's within a very narrow geographic scope, so it, that avoids the cruel and unusual punishment basis for the decision in the Boyd's v. Martin case.
Okay, but they will be punished in N. Thank you. Now then, on to the drugs. Um, state law change has resulted in increased public use of controlled substances without a prescription. You know what, I'm gonna read this part. This is words from somebody else and myself. Uh, this ordinance expansion is not a solution to homelessness or a method to improve our community. It is a method to push those living in homelessness away from the public eye, further marginalizing the most vulnerable members of said community. Uh, Shell, she didn't say I could use those words, but I hope she can, cuz it's in an email. The solution to homelessness in Snohomish County is not punishment, it is effective, accessible services, and affordable accessible housing. This ordinance does absolutely nothing to provide either of those things, and if people had another place to rest, eat, and toilet than in public, where they are met with vitriol, disgust, and violence, they would likely rest in a place that they would, you know, people would like them to be. Homelessness is not an individual problem, it is not a moral failing or a flaw of character, it is a circumstance of life, and it is systemic. The rise of homelessness in Snohomish County can be attributed to a variety of issues, and the blame for these issues cannot be placed on the shoulders of the people living unhoused. They are also members of our community, and they deserve to be treated with dignity, compassion, and to have access to the resources they need. I believe that first question I asked was what are those resources? And we all know that there's not enough of them, but where are they and what can they possibly be using? And the City of Everett was the first to bring a lawsuit against opioid producers and distributors. Many other jurisdictions within the United States of America followed suit, and we are now on the verge of receiving financial reparations for the harm they caused our people and our cities. The City of Everett was also first to bring a lawsuit against owners of bikini barista stands, to hold them accountable for victimizing their workers. The City of Everett knows how to fight and win for the good of its people. I believe the city recognizes that opioid use and opioid abuse is not the fault of the victims. Fentanyl use itself is and should not be a crime. I looked it up, uh, someone had mentioned, when did this all start going south? I believe it might have been when the war on drugs happened on June eighteenth, nineteen seventy-one, was when it started, and it continues. Uh, people on average do not wake up in the morning and decide that they're gonna shoot up heroin, or by golly, they're gonna learn how to smoke fentanyl. Some people might be studying for an academic exam one night and decide they will try their mom's diet pills to stay awake. But none of them are consciously choosing at that moment a lifelong addiction and life of thievery, assault, and incarceration. With these ordinances, we are criminalizing the victim? Now, I do understand, when people are in search of their next fix, they likely commit crimes and cause others to be victimized. You have also spoken on being victimized. Absolutely. I did, uh, I understand, uh, when they're searching for their next fix, they're stealing from grocery stores and front yards, so they can sell whatever product they find in order to get the money to pay the person with the drug that makes for another subset of victims. We talk a lot about the Blake decision and how it caused more people to do drugs openly. Our very own Senator June Robinson worked diligently on a bipartisan fix to the Blake decision, and it likely would have passed the House and the Senate if it weren't for last-minute lobbying efforts to retain local control. This lobbying effort decidedly took away the benefits of a gross misdemeanor, which I know now we have in, uh, put in place in the ordinance that we're putting forward, uh, to be a gross misdemeanor rather than a misdemeanor. Um, decidedly took away the benefits of that, pretrial diversion, possible vacating of convictions, and two-hundred-and-seventy-one million dollars for treatment and recovery services, which is more than we're getting from Big Pharma. And Big Pharma really started this all, and it was all legal. And doctors that we're winning these things from, uh, that we're getting the reparations from, uh, well, I don't know if we're getting it from the doctors yet, but distributors. This isn't just people going out there and getting high. We've allowed, we've allowed it. So, and also, we're trying to use a rational mindset with people that are not thinking rationally. You know, like I believe Mr. Cockburn said last week, if he's not going to follow our rules on, um, a felony charge, why on earth would he do, uh, follow the rules on a misdemeanor, and now gross misdemeanor? So I know that I've mentioned safe consumption sites, and I think, I didn't even know that that was in the Senator Robinson's, I don't know, I didn't know that was in fifty-five, whatever number Senate bill that was. But, um, after this, I'm probably gonna go to a safe consumption site and have a, you know, an alcoholic beverage. We have them already. They don't have nurses. Okay, now I've gone on a very long time, but those words actually have to do with prohibiting public consumption. And section four, uh, yeah, just plain section four, the city hereby declares, let's see, any violation of this ordinance that occurs prior to the preempting statute coming into effect. Oh, right, so, um, may be prosecuted and punished pursuant to this ordinance. So this is in regards to if in July, or before July, the Senate decides that they're gonna do, fix the Blake decision, and it comes about. And we have, let's say, uh, created this ordinance and are following through on it, um, and the people will be prosecuted if we get them between ordinance and July first. Will that count even if within the state legislation, if the, um, the bad thing is vacated?
Um, if I understood your question correctly, it's if we, oh, thank you. If we pass, if I understand your question correctly, it's if, uh, the city council were to pass this present ordinance, and then, is your question about whether, uh, if the legislature does not act by July one, what happens to those ordinances? Or if the, if the legislature does act to criminalize at the state level, um, what happens with those?
With the vacated ones, if, if the state said, you can vacate that, and we've said, no way, we're gonna punish.
Oh, um, I see. Um, I would have to analyze the, the actual language in the, if they revive fifty-five thirty-six, um, or if they have a new version of fifty-five thirty-six that is, um, brought before, it would depend on how they've styled that.
Okay, thank you. And, um, this ordinance would, it, I see it says it goes into effect unless that's the other one, uh, sometime within fifteen days, or around fifteen days. But the Blake decision one doesn't sunset till July first, so does this go into effect if voted yes on before July first, or does it wait till July first?
Yes, it would go into effect, uh, before July first, assuming passage, um, in the regular course, it would go into effect fifteen days after, um, approved by this body, um, and then it would be in effect, um, and less than until preempted by whatever the state legislature does. So there's foreseeably a world where the state legislature doesn't act in this arena of public consumption, um, and therefore doesn't preempt the local ordinance.
And then considering, and I didn't write this down, but considering state law, the local jurisdictional law, we won't get in trouble from the state by having this ordinance on the books while drugs are still, um, not, no, while drugs are still not illegal until July first, or, you know, I'm not sure how exactly to say that, but will, I mean, I imagine since Marysville and Sultan and, uh, some other folks have already put 'em on, then we're fine.
So the, the calculation there is that the ordinance before this body tonight, um, would prohibit, uh, the knowing and public consumption of controlled substances. Currently, there's not an equivalent of that in state law, and so it doesn't occupy the same field.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, D, I don't know, section four, D, um, it's talking about, it's not a defense of prosecution, it's not a defense of prosecution, but it is, in D, an affirmative defense, um, for prosecution that if there is consumption, then if they were in a private residence during the time of the commission, then that would be totally legit in prosecution, saying it doesn't count. They had a house, they were doing it in their house, and there was nobody under eighteen. So really, we, you know, we shouldn't be prosecuting because they had a house. That's to do it in, whether it's their house or not, they were still in a home.
So this touches on public consumption, and public is defined in the ordinance. Currently, mere possession of a controlled substance is still criminalized at the state level, so even in a private residence, it is, it is a crime currently, yes, and may very well be, be, continue to be a crime after July first, if there's action by the state legislature.
Okay, and then I would look at D, I'm not sure exactly why that would be in there if it, um, doesn't mean anything. Um, oh, and also, so is fentanyl ever, uh, prescribed? Oh, yeah, duh, it is, because I have a ton from when my husband was, okay, right, never mind, that was a dumb question. It's the patch kind, and I don't use it, and it's old, and I can't get rid of it because the drug take-back doesn't take it back. Uh, unless the substance was obtained directly or pursuant to a valid prescription, I'm just, I'm curious about that, cuz there's so many drugs that, yeah, I'm, I'm just bringing that up for, for what reason, I don't know at this time. Okay, I'm gonna stop there.
I'm gonna stop there, and thank you for your detailed answers and information.
Thank you. And Mayor Franklin, did you prepare something?
Yeah, I just had a couple, just two corrections to, uh, Councilmember Vogel's comments. Um, number one, uh, there was not, uh, lobbying effort against Senator Robinson's bill, there was support across all cities, the AWC, police chiefs, sheriffs, prosecutors, um, across the board. No, no one thought it was perfect, but there was actually a strong lobbying effort to support Senator Robinson's bill. Um, so I just wanted that to be very clear. And, um, and then, uh, cities that have enacted this do not include the City of Sultan, uh, Marysville, Bellingham, Linwood, Lake Stevens, um, and a number of other cities, and, uh, again, I think we can try to work to provide that, I don't, I'm sure there's a list, but I can tell you that the mayors have been, across the state, have been in conversation since Saturday, and, um, are working to make sure that, and we're sharing ordinances with the goal of all of the ordinances that we're passing to be similar enough, that there's not this patchwork, work of solutions. We are, uh, sharing those solutions, cuz we recognize, um, we don't want different rules in different cities, and until we do have a statewide solution- different cities, and until we do have a statewide solution, which we all want, and we all supported from Senator Robinson, we're trying to coordinate across our communities. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
And I'll just add my thanks to everyone who came tonight to speak, I really appreciate that, and I suspect we'll see you back next week. You know, this is, we are dealing with a lot of decisions that were made along the way over the last twenty, thirty, fifty, maybe hundred years, that are kind of, have come home to roost, and are having a direct impact on people who live in our community and people who work in our community. And it's not just the people who suffer from addiction, it's the people who don't, but are trying to carry on with their business or their lives. And so we're really having to look at, you know, what are, what can we do to help alleviate the impact in a lot of different ways? I know that these are not like the ironclad solutions by any stretch of the imagination, but I also know from my personal experience, from people who I care about, who have faced, you know, legal troubles because of substance abuse, and that did cause them to go into rehab, and that did cause them to get clean and sober, and that has impacted their life in a favorable way. So while it doesn't work for everyone, and it probably doesn't always work the first time, it does have an impact in some people's lives. And so I don't think you can just discount that this idea that someone would end up in jail, going through detox, and getting into rehab can happen, I do believe that it can. Somebody said, you know, we just need a lot more tools, and, and that, I believe, is true. And so these are a couple tools. The question I have really has to do with the failed legislation at the state level, and I'm wondering, are there elements of that that we should be considering implementing at the local level if the state isn't going to take it back up in addition to some of these ideas that we've had come forward? So I would have to kind of have all of my work that's probably in my office to answer that adequately, but I do know the recommendation for gross misdemeanor was, again, based off of the state legislation. And I don't know if Lacy, if you can answer it any more clearly.
The proposed ordinances that I've reviewed, and thank you Mayor Franklin for forwarding me at least a couple of those, have included elements of the referral for services and the encouragement of diversion. So certainly, that is something that is being kind of baked into these solutions at the local level, and something we can explore.
Yeah, and I would just ask you to take a look at that, if, again, if the state decides not to take it up, are there things that we can do at a local level that were in that legislation that would be helpful to us? So, Councilmembers are lingo.
I'm not much in the business of reading state tea leaves, but as I understand it, the governor has said that he would not call the legislature back into session unless there was an agreement from the same group that were actually fairly widely separated by votes on Sunday evening. So I think if, if action is going to be taken, and we'd have confidence in it, it would have to be taken, it would likely need to be taken by us. But again, I only try to read those tea leaves because, to understand our own responsibility here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. Is there a possibility of including an inaction date of July 1st, so that we can avoid any confusion moving forward, or challenges with training staff over what this law is, and then just to get preempted by the state, or purgatory gray areas of when folks get arrested?
Was your question if we could have an inaction date in anything that we propose?
For, sorry, for the drug one specifically, can it be, can it go into effect on July 1st? So if the state's sunsets, then ours picks up right at that moment, instead of fifteen days after it's signed.
Sure. Are you asking about the one that's presently before council, or hypothetical draft ordinances that are yet to become a thing?
The hypothetical ones.
Okay. I will certainly be exploring that with my colleagues at City Legal. There are a lot of benefits to doing something like that, so that we are not preempted. How exactly that would get drafted and worked out language-wise, it'll take a little careful drafting.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, this is different than the fix to the Blake decision. That's, I think you answered that question with Councilmember Vogel, this, because it's, this is about, I'm going to get it wrong, but possession and use, or something like that?
Yes, the current one is about public use. So in a world where we're drafting just a straight knowing possession of controlled substances, certainly we would want to account for the possibility that the legislature will act and preempt that field, absolutely.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Really quick, yes, sorry, really, not a diatribe. Is there money, so there was a lot of money put towards this at the state level, is that, do you know if that money is available some, in some other way to go towards prioritizing and incentivizing treatment options? Like the $271 million, that was to the state, it wasn't just to, you know, the county. But there was money with that, and now we don't have any, unless we do.
Yeah, Mayor Franklin may be able to speak to that better than I can. So that, that was one of the wonderful benefits of that last one, that everyone was really excited about, but there were other things that I think wouldn't have worked for cities in the implementation. The legislature is, I'm hopeful, and we will all continue to lobby for those investments. We have been lobbying this entire session, we will continue to lobby after session and beyond, and I do believe everyone sees the need for treatment. My concern, honestly, I was thrilled to see the $271 investment in that proposal, but as we all know, how long it's taking to do anything, so we'll, I'll use the days in as example, we have a county ready to have a new shelter, and it's taking, it's going to take two or three years, and it's already built. So we're talking about building treatment capacity. There's no way, I mean, the investment needs to happen now, absolutely, but those solutions will not be in our communities for a decade. So, we need it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. That brings us to the end of our agenda. We did not have any items on for action tonight, and with no executive session and no further business, we are now adjourned.